Ready? All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council and Redevelopment Agency Joint Work Session of August 20th, 2024. We are going to get this started, but please note that Councilmember Blair will be on his way. Councilmember Graff asked us to be, if he could be excused tonight, I can never say that right. And, and so did Chair Ritchie. So with that, we're going to get started. We have some fun topics to talk about in our work session, but let's just quickly go over our agenda for during, for our city council meeting. We've got a few things, the appointments, Trails Committee, Christmas Village, and then we also have the ordinance that we're, I think, talking about today in our work session. Is there any questions on the mixed-use zone text amendments? And we talked about the firefighter retirement revisions last week as well, or a couple of weeks ago. Any questions about that? Just making that distinct, or distinction between firefighters and the paramedics and then and then making the Ogden-Ben master plan updates. Any questions about that? Wow, okay. All right, let's get our work session started. We have the, up on the docket is the Ogden Trails Network Sunset Report, Michael Goodrick. Okay, that's my entrance. If you start dancing, then it might make it all worth it. You can kind of come up there, yeah. Well, he's trying to. Is it with your presentation? Well, it's a very good entrance. I know, I like it. That is, I says that it's listening, which is even worse. What's listening? Who's listening? Do you want to? Does it come out on Facebook and YouTube? Okay. All right, Michael Amonti. Do we have these new cool things? It turns green.
Holy cow, wow. All right, well, thank you for having us. Appreciate you taking the time and passing our agenda to listen to Ogden Trails Network. So what we are is we follow the ordinance 3-2, partnership with the Parks Division with OTN Community to provide world-class trails accessible within Ogden and around Ogden. Our liaison, Andrea Monti, our Parks and Rec, and then Stacy is our coordinator. And also works with Monty. So the committee is led by myself. In my day job, I'm an engineer at Northup Grumman. And then Nick McMillan, who is an entrepreneur for Gold and Spike Tattoo Downtown. So we lead the committee in projects and call this ministry out of the year. And so since we come here last time, we just want to highlight some of our snippet contributions that we made to the community. And we do a lot of maintenance on the trails, so we got things like replacing totems, replacing tread, a lot of signs, a lot of bridges, drainage, keeping trail clear down trees, keeping grass back. We do all our commu- working with other organizations within the community, like Trails Foundations in Northern Utah. DNR did a lot of work with us this year. They've been great and put in a bunch of hours on the trails. And our end goal is really to make sure we have good trails in Ogden for people to come to Ogden and use the trails and of course, the system installation for our community. These are some examples of stuff we've done. These are the new trailhead signs that we have all around town now. These look really awesome. They've been holding up really well the last couple of years. We're really glad to have those. We've also put up new information kiosks. And that's the middle picture there. So that's where we put up our trail signs and any kind of information bulletin we need to put out for in the community. And then we have lots of trail totems around town, and these mainly just have directional signs of like where this trail goes, where you can end up, go on left, right, straight. And then on the bottom, a lot of trails were adopted by a local family or business, and we put their sponsorship on the bottom of the totals. So a little bit of history of the trail users. So we have a bunch of trail counters out in town. So these track traffic, both people and bikes. And so we have seventeen counters and we've been having them out for seven years now, seven plus years. And we go out every so often and download the data, refresh the batteries, give them a health check. And we upload them to a website and does a bunch of data analysis and tells us what trails are being used, what time of day, what time of week. And then on average, receive about a hundred and fifty people a day on trails from around town. One of the busiest trails, of course, is Parkway, because it's just a nice paved path and is definitely very accessible to most users. And that's almost four hundred people a day use that between River Parkway along the dinosaur park. So planning development we've done, so along the Botanical Gardens, we put in that dirt path that goes on the backside botanical, so you don't have to use a paved trail. This is a really nice, about three-quarter mile multi-use trail. It's bi-directional, it puts you out over in the orchard and then brings you back around the parking lot. This was a different multi-year project that we worked with the city on, and this was hundreds of volunteer hours went into cutting in this trail and maintaining it. Another trail we've been working on is, we're called Birdsong Alternate. So this is over right by Birdsong in the Ramo Gardens area. And there's a lot of traffic on that trail, a lot of hikers and bikers, multi-use on that trail. So we put in another trail along the side so we can split some of the traffic, so as to relieve some congestion on the high-traffic areas. These are the kind of things that come out of using our trail data, so we can analyze where trails are, where they're being used, and then we can help alleviate some of that traffic. Some big projects we've done last couple of years. So last year, we replaced two bridges in Tarrytown Canyon. So this was working with the Ogden High Mountain Biking Team. They came out and volunteered two hundred and fifty hours and sixty individuals, and we really placed two bridges within a weekend. This includes taking the old bridge out, repairing the shore, and then putting in the new bridge. So some of the ongoing work, we're always trying to redefine the vision of Ogden Trail Systems within the, within the city, within, on the front, along the shoreline. Are trying to always identify areas of improvement, resource facilities, evaluating as we go. And the last one there really are outcomes. We want to submit recommendations to city resources to help keep this vision alive. Okay, first recommendation we had, informal relationships with other organizations. So we have an MOU out there that we suspect could play well with other organizations. And with the trails being so popular, we could really benefit from two full-time employees to manage trails. So we are a hundred percent volunteer-based, and we, I wouldn't say get overlooked, but other organizations that have full-time staff seem to be putting in a higher level of contribution to the community than we are. I think we had some full-time people that helped us get our name out there, helped do some awareness in the community of the trails, how to use the trails, what are the city ordinances, plan better projects, bigger projects, things for the future. So we are all volunteer-based, and so we, everybody has their own jobs and lives, and they give their time when they can, and sometimes things fall through. If we, like I said, we have a dedication, some of the things we envision them, they would be able to do. Help plan more frequent of all trail projects. Get, get more from the volunteers. So right now, because we, like I said, we're all volunteers, so we build projects from what we think we can actually accomplish in a weekend or a couple of days. But if we had something that could do a bigger project, we could expand our scope to incorporate to get more from the volunteers when they show up on trail digs. Other things I really think we could benefit from is having full-time, set the correct grants. So fundraising is always a big thing, and if we had some of the correct grants and go, we'd get actively get funding for us. It would definitely help the community as well to put that back into the trails. An ordinance needs to be updated. So we talked about this one beforehand with Monty and Stacy. So ordinance 322-3, it mentions non-motorized for trail usage. And the issue we have with this is that with the evolution of e-bikes and the electrification of bicycles, we need to determine what is non-motorized. So I believe there's a policy in place that Monty's been working on. So when that finally becomes real, we need to make sure we update the ordinances to reflect that. And then the last one here was just our sunset was expiring in 2024. It's about to extend a couple of years. Yeah, there's that one. Any questions?
Yeah, so can you expand on what your thought is and what their proposal will be for the non-motorized?
Yeah, definitely. So
e-bikes specifically?
The way we've interpreted this is that a non-motorized, so within the e-bike group, there's multiple classes. So a class-one e-bike has a battery and is an electric assist, but you still have to actively pedal the bike. And that's kind of where we've been drawing the line unofficially, until a policy is actually out there. But then you get into whole electric dirt bikes and then things that you don't have to pedal at all, they just have pegs and are fully battery-powered. And those things are just pose significant danger to trail users because they're silent and they come up on you so fast. And so we're trying to keep the trail safe by allowing class-one e-bikes out there because they only go so fast because you actually have to physically pedal them. And so there's not as much danger of running somebody down. So that's kind of where we've been distinguishing non-motorized and motorized, is by basically how fast and what effort to put into the bike.
Just about that, I'm on the Wasatch Regional Council Active Transportation Committee, and they did talk about this ordinance, I think the legislature was actually working on it. You probably are more familiar than I, Marcia. But they were talking about the amount of amperage and the top speed of the, of the bike and that it must have pedals, because some still don't qualify because they go too fast.
Twenty miles an hour.
So twenty is, so there's class one, two, and three. When you're into class three, you're over twenty miles an hour and, and, and your throttle can be, you can initiate your throttle without pedaling. Right? Where, where the, you know, the others are capped at twenty miles an hour and you must be pedaling for it to assist. So.
Well, it, it seems that we should be using whatever standard is, is a standard rather than just something we make up.
Well, the, one of the issues is that it's been moving so fast, right? The technology has moved so fast that everybody's trying to, there, there hasn't been necessarily one standard out there.
I'll give you that.
You, you know, like the US Forest Service doesn't allow them any at all, but they're not going to enforce, right? So, yeah, so we, we have a pretty good framework and a few more tweaks to make.
A question that I had though is, you talked about volunteers and up above, up above my house where I hike the trails, there's, there's a bridge or two that I think were built by Boy Scout troops and things like that. Are you still getting, you know, either church groups or scout troops or somebody like that volunteering or?
Tend to get like one or two a year, like an EcoScout project. So we get like certain individuals that come to us and ask for a project, and we find them like a bridge or try things repaired or drainage or retaining wall or something, we'll find a product for them.
And are you familiar with the website Just Serve?
I am not.
So Stacy uses Just Serve quite a bit, which is
Yeah, you could put your projects there and you'd probably get volunteers that you wouldn't expect normally that you'd get. I just suggest that you look into that and you can
Yeah, that sounds good.
You can post, post service projects there.
And Mi- Michael probably won't say this, but he's not going to toot his own horn, but their OTNs are really great about, you know, they, they they'll organize what they call a trail dig, which is just a, you know, an evening of volunteer work on the, on the trail, and they have, you know, a pretty good network of trail users and community members that show up to those and, and, and they get, they get a lot done. So.
So I have a question along those lines, and I appreciate OTN and everything that you do. I'm just curious, like with the bridges or digging up trails or anything, do they have full reign? Do, do they get to choose what bridges need to be repaired, what not, how to repair them, how to replace them, what it looks like? Or is that, do, do we, does the city have any part in that?
Well, yeah, I think, well, I don't want to speak for Mike, but it, it depends on where it's at, right? But so, like, Mike worked on, on one with OTN this last season, and it took a lot of time to get a pretty, what, I mean, he, he's an engineer, right? I don't think it was anything too crazy, but it took a lot of time because it was actually just over on the Forest Service ground, but it was on what, 27th Street, right? And so when the Forest Service is involved, there's a whole nother, you know, they do what's called a SPA. And there's paperwork that's filed, and then they review it and the contract that goes back and forth. And we have a, we do have an OTN has a MOU with the Forest Service, and so it took a long time to get paperwork done to then replace a few small bridges. So, but it really depends on where it's at, you know, if it's on, if it's on city property, then we can just get, get together and then they can do it if it's on, you know, Forest Service or Weber State, or, I mean, there's a, or private, you know, there's a lot of different property owners along the east bench. Okay. I didn't mean to speak for you.
No, that's basically, it depends on where it's located. Typically, we follow, the Forest Service has good guidelines on how to build a good bridge. And so we tend to follow what they have, but we still work with Monty, get approval and buy lumber and we'll set up a trail dig and go knock it out.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. It'll be great that we do have a grant writer that will be on staff that will be helpful. I think there are
Yeah, that'd be great.
A lot of grants that we are missing out on, so that will be, that'll be great. Monty, I'm going to put you a little bit on the spot. I've been getting a lot of emails recently and just wondering what you're rethinking or thinking or thinking differently about the cutting across the golf course. So if you, sorry, you well, I'm sure you knew that we were going to ask that question, but if you could give a quick update.
Something in my gut said you might.
Yeah, if you could just give us a quick update, because in fact, I got another email today.
So I, I mean, we, I met with Todd Brinkman up there again today with a small risk management group from the city, just to, to look at it. And we're still trying to work through, you know, what, what the best way is to minimize conflict between golfers and, and people that are, are accessing the golf course and crossing the fairway. Mara and I have spoken a few times recently and, and, and one, one thing that we talked with OTN was, you know, how can we use signage and educate and, and try to have a campaign of education to help minimize some of those conflicts, but it's not something that we're I, I don't think we've settled on a, on a, on a plan. We're still trying to work through it and, and look at, look at different options. In fact, when we were up there today, we spoke with several trail users that had, you know, come, come across the golf course. And so just trying to find out what the best avenue is.
Happy medium between some of that, I'm sure. Yeah. I mean, first and foremost is a golf course, but there's a trail that connects on both sides. So trying to figure out how to.
Can you, can you fella sit on what you're get, what you're hearing? I, I'm, I'm not hearing it, so.
There are a lot of trail users that will use up on 29th Street. There's a, a spot that you can kind of cross there on, which hole is it? Second?
I mean, not to
Yeah, go ahead. It's probably easier for you to, I don't even know what hole it is. It's two, third, second hole.
Couple of weeks ago, I mean, Justin sent something, I'm, I'm, this is secondhand, so correct me if I'm wrong. I think a week ago, two weeks ago, Justin sent something to OTN to put on their website. Is that correct? To, yeah, that's, I'm just trying to give some background. Yeah, just to, to say, you know, we, we don't want people, non-golfers on the, on, on the golf course.
Well, crossing across the fairway.
I'm, I'm just looking at the map and trying to see where they're trying to cross. It looks like maybe 33rd Street.
So Gibbs, Gibbs kind of didn't come around, comes around on the backside and you can cut across the golf course. A lot of runners, Weaver State runners use it.
I see a lot of runners when we're golfing there, but they're, they're not in conflict usually. They're
Well, sixteen, sixteen, you walk right across the fairway.
Okay.
So, so there's, there's no, if you look at the, if you look at all of the maps that have been put out, there's no designated trail that crossed the golf course. So the Gibbs Loop and the East Bench Bike Trail. And, you know, a portion of the Blue Ribbon Trail, they, they're all on the, on the peripheral of the actual course. And so they're, they're not, there aren't design, designated trails that cross the fairways. It's a Pine View, the Bureau of Reclamation owns some ground where Pine View has a water line that, that crosses, and so that, that and some of the maintenance roads through, through the golf course are what people leave Gibbs Loop right after 29th Street and enter into the golf course. And then they come out on the other side onto Gibbs Loop also, which there is a portion of Gibbs Loop in between thirty six, the 36th Street Trailhead moving north. I forget what hole it is, but it is also on a, it's, there's a portion of it that is on the side of an access road. And so there's a, so that, that's where most of, most cross. But we're, we're still looking at and, and want to look at signage with education and, and things, so.
I mean, yeah, I agree. I there needs to be a happy medium, but it is a golf course. And I just don't know any other, but, I mean, we were there last Tuesday. It was getting towards, I mean, three e-bikes were going up and down the fairway. That's, you know.
Golfers were still there?
Yeah, huh?
And the golfers?
Yeah, we were still there. We were on, we were on eight and they were coming up past seven. So, I mean, that's, so I, I get it. I understand it.
Yeah, a lot of people walk it with their dogs. Okay, well, let, keep us posted on that.
Yeah, we, we will. We're, we're, we're still working through things.
Would you like, so when we get emails like that, would you like to see them? So, I mean,
Yeah.
I, I just wondered if you
Yeah, I, I think the more information that we have, the, the better it is for us to make educated decisions.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll, we'll forward what we have. It'd be great.
If you need a deputy, I'd be happy to throw for you.
Many times. How do you guys work with the Utah, no?
We were trails.
Then you, yeah, yeah, then you.
Yeah, so Eric is a great partner we have in the community. So it kind of goes hand in hand. So we have projects and when you help, we go to Eric, and if he has projects, we, he comes to us as well. But we also work really well with training. So for example, Eric's been on trail training here next weekend, and he paid for two spots for OTN members to go and join. So if he has a special venue to include us in his trail trainings and things like that and trail digs. They helped us on Indian Trail this year. His full-time staff was out there both Friday and Saturday helping the mountain biking team. We go to each other's events, so they come and support our events. We go to their events and stuff. So we have a good work relationship with GFMU.
Great. Thanks.
Let me ask one more. Just, just from my own knowledge, I mean, I assume that the trails that are ours would fall under you. Is that correct, Monty? And you and your team?
Yeah, so, so the trails in Ogden City and on Ogden City ground, yeah.
So do you know how much time you or your team spend on the trails? You know, I don't know.
Like in a maintenance?
Yeah.
So I would say city staff right now spends, we, we spend the majority of our time at a trailhead, right? There's like weekly maintenance that goes on at, at trailheads with garbage removal. And there's some like at 29th Street, there's restrooms there. OTN, for the most part, does the vast majority of tread work and trail work on the actual trails. But they work with us, you know, they, so they, they have a, a shed at 22nd Street that is full of supply, full of supplies. And so you know, a lot of times Mike, Mike or one of the other members is working with, with my team and hey, can you bring this up or can you, you, you know, help out with some equipment, but they do the vast majority of the OTN with volunteers do the vast majority of tread work and trail, trail work, where we're, our staff is more, you know, spending most of our time at trailheads and mouth of the canyon and things.
Okay. That helps.
And Parkway, I, I guess Parkway Trail is more, we're, we're, we're doing, that's mostly city labor.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? So, um, the reappointments of the OTN are on the agenda for tonight as well as the sunset. Are we okay with that? Any other question, I, we're, are we, I'm assuming we're okay, if we aren't, let's have some further discussion, alright, great, thanks. Thanks for coming in. Next up, we have Barton Briarly. I, I think we've talked about this once, but we're twice.
This is the first time we're actually talking about.
The actual reason, alright.
I apologize, I don't have any great music to go with the zone.
You never know, just. Give it a, give it a second.
Consider for the future, okay. Maybe send the law for true colors, what color the map should be or something. So, yes, this is a request for a zone change, it is. A request to change the zone to this Flex Industrial Zone, we've had several discussions about that when we created the Flex Industrial Zone. So, and maybe we'll get this to work. There we go, okay, so this piece property is near the airport, it's on. Forty-four hundred south, it's just west of the Kemp Jet Center, it's vacant land. This is a photo of the property, you can see it's just a big vacant piece of property with the airport behind it. It's adjacent to the Kemp Jet Center, the. Is across forty-four hundred south, which you can see. Forty-four hundred south, the south side of that is in Roy. And it is residential, but you can see on here, all the properties are inwardly faced, so they don't have. Driveways fronting onto forty-five hundred south, all the driveways are on interior roads. So, it's a real strong boundary between. The Ogden Airport area and the residential areas. So, the current zoning. In Ogden, this is airport commercial. Uh, to the north, the airport is airport industrial. To the west, it's in Roy, it's a business park zone, south, it's in Roy, it's a single-family residential zone. So, the. Property owner applicants would like to change this to a Flex Industrial Zone. And do some sort of Flex Industrial project, now, this is not. The project that are proposing, this is just an example I found of what a Flex Industrial space could look like, so. These are typically a large building divided into units that people can. Rent out, often they can rent out one or two or three depending on the. Their needs, they often have roll-up doors, uh, they might have a storefront area or an office area. And they could be used for any sort of variety of uses, might be a plumbing contractor uses it to. Run his office and store his equipment, might be. Another contractor, might be a lighting or electrical person that. Keeps their supplies there, has people come in, look at. Different supplies, runs trucks out of it, might be a small manufacturer that goes in one of these spaces, so. Could be just a variety of uses. So, it's currently zoned airport commercial, which allows some of those uses and not others. And so, we went through the process of creating this Flex Industrial to expand the allowable uses. So, for example, allow more vehicle repair, warehouse distribution. My, any of the uses in the airport commercial have to be really related to aviation, this. Flex Industrial would allow things that aren't necessarily related to aviation. So, give, it would give the property owner a lot greater latitude in how they use the property. So, the general plan has guidelines for zone changes, uh, one is. How it relates to the neighborhood, uh, that there's an edge, that it follows the character. That there's separation between zones, and that's why I showed you how forty-four hundred south is really a good boundary between. This, what does this be, the Flex Industrial and residential across from Roy. This will really tie more into the airport uses.
Uh, in the, in this zone, it, I can't recall setbacks from property line, is that? Is that something that is, uh, is this designed to, to use parking that's interior? And these things be, be at property line, or? Is there parking in fr- in front and then the, the uses are setback, that the, the. Project you sho- you showed, I think it was, it was setback and parking in the front, but what's our zone?
Yeah, there are setbacks from property lines, so you do, would have to have a landscape strip along the street, it doesn't require that the. Parking be behind the building, so you could have. You know, basically, street landscaping, parking and building, or you could have. Right, street landscaping, building and parking behind, either one would be allowed in this, this particular zone.
Yeah, I was just considering the, the rear-facing houses across the street, how, how, how far they might be from. From a, from a use, so, so, thank you.
One of the things that, uh, the general plan says. That you need to look at is the, that commercial zoning should be based on market patterns. And, uh, this has been zoned airport commercial, I think the property owners would say, if they could get. Airport-related commercial uses, uh, there, they would be happy to accommodate them, uh, they would have already built that. Uh, but it's just a fairly niche market, and so. Just with that much land, they, they haven't been able to find enough of that sort of niche. Either manufacturing or commercial uses, and so, they would like to widen up that market. One of our requirements is that, uh, zone boundaries shouldn't cut, not cut across individual lots, and so they've proposed a subdivision. It's under review now to, that would actually carve out this piece of property for the Flex Zone. So, the planning commission's recommended that, uh, you approve the. Zone change, uh, with the condition that they complete that subdivision to, so the zone boundary follows the property line. Any questions?
Did you reach your hand?
I had a question.
You, I, I saw it in the corner of my eye, it was you.
Is there, I, I know that we, we had talked about when we did this zone, that. That the use next to the airport or essentially really on airport property adjacent, I guess is the way to put that. That we may consider a. Conditional overlay for this zone. Based on, maybe there are some, there are some things in the zone that wouldn't be appropriate here, as, do you see any of those things that? They were out of, we had a. Call out?
Um, I think we built that into the zoning when we created the zone, uh, for example. Well, we don't want anything in this area that would have a large assembly of people because it's so close to the airport, so those were not. Allowed in the zone, uh, anything that creates a lot of fumes or stuff that might. Bother aircraft, those would not be allowed in the zone, so I think we covered. Those potential conflicting uses when we created the zone.
So, on your list here, comparison of uses, airport commercial allowable uses, those aren't the ones that are in the Flex. They're just there for comparison?
Yes, it's just, since we're going from airport commercial to Flex, we're showing.
Okay, alright, okay, I'm happy, thank you.
And if I remember right, the design standards were like you had to choose three of five or five of seven, or is that, is that the right, I can't remember.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, there's some.
Some brick or had to have an overhang or something.
Yeah, a little bit of texture to it, so it's not just a.
Yeah, they had to pick three or something, I can't remember, yeah.
Ugly building, yeah. Uh, it's just our regular noise ordinance, yeah. Yes. Yes, and it would, you know, the, it really is to protect residential areas, and interesting enough, all the residential areas are in Roy, so. Be kind of their noise ordinance. I think that would be a good idea to, to be partners with them, I think they can help us and we can help them.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, this is on the schedule for when?
The, the third, September third.
You hear anything between now and then? We'll get back to you.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Barton. Alright, Steve.
Hello, Vice Chair, White Council Members, it's not often I get to, uh, come up from the kids' table, so it's good to, to be with you up here, I like it. Yes. Um, so the reason I'm up here is to just go over, um, the, the, the draft code of conduct. That has been created, um, to give you a little bit of backstory behind that, um, back in January. The council expressed some interest in drafting a city, Ogden City Council Code of Conduct. Uh, in, in a work session, and from that work session, um, a, a, a Code of Conduct Committee was formed of. A few council members and some staff, uh, including a, a representative from our, our, the league, the city's legal department. And in February, March and April, uh, we met, the, the committee met to, um, provide feedback on some. Some, pro- provide direction on what that should look like, and also to provide feedback on, uh, a first, uh, first couple of iterations there. And so what I'm gonna show you on the screen here. Is, uh. Two, two drafts that were, that the committee came up with, and I guess the, the goal is to. Get your feedback on any of that, if it's something that you'd like to, to move forward with, or if it's something that you'd like to change. Um, the first draft that was created would be a, a full code of conduct similar to the one that we looked like. The one that we looked at that Salt Lake had come up with, it's a separate document from their rules and norms, um, and it is. Salt Lakes as well as several other cities councils that have a code of conduct, have kind of this separate document that, that spells out. Um, how council members should act in different situations. Do you remember back in January when we first had this conversation? One of the reasons Salt Lake did it, ado- adopted a code of conduct was so that council members, if they didn't understand how. Uh, how to interact in different situations, that they'd have something, some kind of standard to, to look at and fall back to. Um, so what was drafted by the, um, the Code of Conduct Committee, what we looked at, uh, was, i- is. Got two versions, one is the longer version, which is its own separate document, the other version that we'll look at just after this is. An amend, an amendment to the rules and norms, which you'll see is quite a bit shorter, and I, I kind of just call it the condensed version. Of a code of conduct, and it, that could fit into the rules and norms. So, I, I won't, uh, I won't read all of it, I'll just kind of go over some highlights here, but, uh, one, one other thing I'll mention is, um. The Utah League of Cities and Towns put out a publication about. Suggestions on how to go about forming a, a city council code of conduct, and this, this, this generally follows that. Um, that guideline that they put out, so you've got an introduction here that explains the purpose for it, um, really in this case, it's to set a standard. Um, of, of council member conduct and behavior. And Phil, and, and let me know if you want me to, to go over any of the specifics here. Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'll zoom in here. So you got the introduction starting us out. Um, then, then you get into, um, the main part of, of the code of conduct, which is the principles and guidelines, which is really what. What spells out how you, how you should act in, in any situation that you might be in, so you've got, um, council member conduct with one another. Um, council member conduct in public meetings, you can see you get some specifics there on, on, on behavior. Um, respect others' time and, you know, all that stuff in there, um, honor the role of the chair and maintaining order. Um, and then you get into council member conduct with the public, tells you how to interact with the public. Couple of things in there that I'll just highlight, you know, make no promises on behalf of the councilor staff. Uh, make no personal comments about other council members. Um, and there's just a few more here, you get into council member conduct with administration and council staff, um, that's a common, um. Part of a code of conduct that we've seen that other city councils have adopted, um, that explains that relationship. And then, a couple more, you've got, uh, while traveling on city business, um, that's a common one. Um, just to be mindful that, um, you know, taxpayer funds are paying for, for travel and, uh, and event registration. And then the last one here is, um, just kind of, I guess, everything else, right, so, uh, council member conduct in unofficial settings. Uh, information provided to the media should be accurate, be mindful that your comments and behavior may be accessible to the public. Um, so that's, like I said, that's kind of the, the meat and potatoes of a city council code of conduct from, from what we've seen, uh, and from best practices. Then it, then it gets into a compliance and enforcement section, you might remember this when we looked at Salt Lakes, um, so. A lot of, a lot of these codes, um, have a provision that says what, what to do if someone violates the code. And that, that's what we, what we wrote in here. Um, and it goes over how to file a complaint and, and what's to happen there, one thing I want to highlight on this specific section. Um, when, when the committee met, it was pointed out that a, a code of conduct, um, while it can be a good thing and, and, like I said, set a standard. Uh, of civility, um, there's nothing in state code that requires this, there's nothing in state code that says what happens if you don't follow your code of conduct. And so, um. I think it's important to, I would say, what, what, what we discussed as a committee was, be mindful that. The, a code of conduct is kind of aspirational, um, and that there's nothing really in state code that says that you have to do this, or, or what happens if a violation occurs. Last couple of sections here are implementation, in this case, implementation says it's intended to be self-governing, and that it will be reviewed and updated. A- as necessary. And then the last part of a code of conduct from what we've seen is a, some kind of affirmation statement, something for council members to sign if they'd like. Um, that says that they have read it and understand it. Um, and so that was, that was the first, uh, draft. And then this, the second draft that I'll go over, and you'll see, it's just a, an amended rules and norms, now. You're, you're probably familiar with the way that all this looks, you've got, uh, the red, which is strike through, uh, being, you know. Language that's going away and blue is amended language, and when it comes to this document. Uh, it looks a little funny when you, you edit the table of contents, so you can kind of ignore that, but you could, you can see that there's just really one section being added. Which is council member conduct, um, and then it's gonna show the same thing as I scroll down when you see that. That that was edited, so let me go down here to this new section, and really, uh, it's, I'll, I'll zoom out and then I'll zoom in, I'll zoom out so you can see that it's just a page. Uh, a few paragraphs, and again, the, um, the committee, um, asked, uh, for this to be an option. In case the council, um, didn't want to have anything to have to sign, um, or in case the council didn't want any kind of code, uh. Enforcement, um, section, and that's exactly what this is, so you'll see, really, it's just a condensed version, it just, it describes council member conduct. And all those settings that we talked about. Um, and it doesn't include some of those. Affirmations to sign or enforcement section. So I, I'll zoom in here so you can read some of those, but really, it is just, like I mentioned, condensed from, from the longer document. Happy to, to get any feedback if you have any, um, yeah, thanks.
Let's have a quick question.
Yeah.
Um, well, and I appreciate all the work that went into this. Um, just curious, um. Is there like an employee handbook that would be relevant to this? I mean, because we're employees too, right? So I just don't know if we're duplicating or I don't know, just curious about that.
Um, the, the, this, this doesn't really duplicate anything that's in the rules and norms or. Which, which I, which is what this, this council would follow as a rules and norms. Now, there are some city guidelines. That are included, but no, this doesn't duplicate um, anything that's already there. It's just kind of up. Above, above and beyond that.
So to me, the debate is, or the decision that we need to make is to determine if we want to have a separate code of conduct. Or if we want to insert into the rules and norms, some of the important. Uh, priorities that we've identified to have in this uh, council member conduct, the code of conduct. To me, I think it's important that we do one or the other. Because I, there are some things that uh, I, I feel that a code of conduct brings to the table that are, that are very important. Um, I, I just appreciate Steve and the effort and time that he's gone into uh, bring all this together. He's done a lot of work. And then Gary has also reviewed this pretty thoroughly and I think this is a really good document. I think it's uh, I think it's. Worthy of our consideration and. I personally. Well, I guess I just have a question for Steve. Could you please just elaborate a little bit more? About having a separate document, a separate code of conduct document, as opposed to placing it in the rules and norms, or what are the benefits? Of each?
Sure. Um, a separate document, uh, in my mind, it, 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 it is um, it's a. It's clearly distinct from the rules and norms, um, which means it is the council acknowledging. That it, I guess that it should be separate from the rules and norms. Uh, but uh, I, I would also say that. The, the affirmation that's in there um, is something that is a statement, um, could be a statement to, to you as a, as a council, but also to the public. Um, so there, there's, it's a clear different, it's, it's, it makes a clear difference between uh, the, the, the code of conduct. And the rules and norms. Um, but if it's, if it's in the rules and norms, um, it might not be as easy for a council member to find. Um, if you're. Uh, if you're, if you're trying to figure out, um, you know, how you should act in any situation. Uh, that being said, it, it really isn't too hard to find. Um, it's just in with all this other stuff that you have to look at.
Mostly I just asked Janine.
I won't. Okay, there we go. Maybe one of the distinctions too would be. When. A council member signs this, so you know, there's possibility they just have it. Signed, they just execute it at the beginning of their four-year term and you never see it again. Um, or we could have you execute it every year. Um, rules and norms are generally updated once or twice a year. And they're adopted, so they're out there in the public. I do think, qu- correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I think most of the. Councils that have these have posted them on their website, is that right?
Yeah, yep.
And our rules and norms are also on the website, but um, having it separate might be a little bit different.
One of the things that I particularly like about the code of conduct being separate. Is I think that it gives us a city, as city council members. A, a, a little higher sense of um. Of conduct for us. It raises the bar and then I like the fact that it also has some additional. Thoughts there about um, you know, implementation or consequences. And being as that we are elected officials. The council does not have any right to, to bar another person from serving on the city council because they're an elected person. And so we can't dismiss them, but there, there are some. There are some consequences for misconduct and they're clearly stated and, and I just, I, I really like that code of conduct. And the reason why is I've lived by a code of conduct in another organization that I serve in. And serve on, I've served in several capacities in that code of conduct and I just think it's an important document. For us as professionals, as members of the city council, realize and represent that there's a higher bar that we need to perform at when we represent the city. And as we represent the city. So I'm in favor of having a separate uh. Code of Conduct.
Were, you were on the committee? Just wondered if you hadn't.
I, I, I was on the committee and I, you know, I, I have talked with Sean a little bit. Uh. We, we talked after one of the meetings, cause he's feels, he feels the way he just stated. And I, you know, I, all along, I've kind of felt like it probably belongs on the rules and norms. I. It is a document that I keep in my thing and I review it often and. And it's, it's something that if I need to get some clarity, I, I, I review it. It's because it's right there. Not that you maybe couldn't do it, uh, if it was a separate document, I just, but I just think it, I think it fits in the rules and norms for us. Since there, there is no legislative uh. Yeah, repercussion, that's a good word. I, I think it's, it then uh, the twice a year that we would. Uh, review it for updates. I think that's an important thing and. By virtue of voting to update it, it, it's, it's like we signed it. So I. Just, that's kind of, kind of where I, I get with this thing. I think it becomes more of our working document if it's in the rules and norms.
Yeah, I actually like it in the rules and norms as well. I mean, I, I can see pros and cons to both, but I like it that we do review that. That it can change um, or be tweaked a little bit easier than if it was a. Actual document, but I can see pros and cons to both, so I'm. Um, but maybe that also gives us an opportunity to. Do more. Twice a year or at least once a year of. This is what is in our rules and norms. I mean, I know that we go through it, but I don't know that we really. Talk a lot about it, you know, I don't think we spend a lot of time. Maybe it's a good opportunity to educate ourselves again or re-educate and. And rea- and educate the public as well. Um, so. I like it that it might not be a separate document, but.
I was wondering, you know how when you um. I don't know if this happens for all um, times you file for office, but um. I think there's an optional pledge that you can sign. So I wonder if the signature page is, I was thinking like, what if somebody refuses to sign it?
That was exactly.
We can't really do anything about it, so maybe it's optional to sign the additional document. I mean. Obviously peer pressure plays it a little bit, but at the same time, um, you know, people don't have to sign it. What can we do if they didn't sign it, you know? You're sanctioned for not signing the thing that says you're going to get sanctioned.
Yeah.
When we. Is Dave online?
De- uh, Dave Graff's online as well, so um, Councilmember Graff, do you want to weigh in on this or? Sorry, I didn't.
Good afternoon, th- thank you.
I should have recognized you earlier.
That's alright. I don't recognize myself right now.
Raise your right hand, not your left one.
Hey, I, I, I kind of like the idea that this gets incorporated, at least initially. Into our rules and norms as it's a new document. And uh, we get an opportunity to work with it and watch it evolve.
Give us a minute, we might be having up there.
Tell me when. Testing, testing.
There we go. Now we can hear you.
Alright, so I kind of like that this being a new effort, something brand new to this council. That it lives within the corners of our rules and norms and it gives us an opportunity to kind of live with it. Um, and, and then revisit it and easily. Update it or change it, um, as we become familiar with. Any kinks or any additions that we'd like to make uh, over the course of its initial use. And then. Once we kind of get it down and find that it's working well, maybe we move to a separate document in and of itself.
Good feedback.
I just asked Janine, I agree, I think, um, I mean. It's been a long time since I was a new council member and had, went through the little. Orientation, if you will, but they go, they review the rules and norms. I mean, not that we wouldn't review the separate document, but I, I just think it's. That makes more sense to me to put it there and then you know where they're at. Um, and yeah, and then we can review them and. We have a chance to review them. More regularly, I guess. Um, yeah. That's just me.
Yeah. Any other comment?
Well, it sounds to me like we'd like to have it in the rules and norms and I support that. Um, I think it's a great step forward that we're taking to include this in the rules and norms. I think it has much effect, so. I'm not the council chair, but I endorse that, Steve, and I guess that's the direction that we would plan on going.
Yeah, and I, and I, I want, I want to also say that this is, we're doing this because. There's no issue right now. It's, it's worse to be on the other end and having an issue and then trying to deal with something, so I think. Thank you for the time you guys put in and Steve too, so.
I did have that same question though, that Angela had about the not signing and maybe there, maybe that should be just inserted in there also, that this is all. Voluntary, you don't have to. Participate or something like that, just, you know, but. Cause I agree, I'm, I'm not saying anyone here, but. In the future, I'm just trying to think of other scenarios.
And I guess, you know, just to piggyback on that too, is like some things in there, um, like if somebody is getting violent, then the police. That would be like a civil issue, like the police could help us deal with it, right? Or something like that, so I guess. There's other rules that are also outside of our body that would help in some cases, I guess.
What's our next steps for this one? And so, is this on? Can you hear it? It's not on. I know, but.
That's the one that the indicator doesn't work, it's turned on.
Okay, that's what I thought, that is probably the light. Yeah, so um, we have this scheduled tentatively for September third. If you're okay moving forward, we can just. Put it, you can make sure it's, that's the day it's on. And we probably should, I, I think Chair Ritchie's back. Tomorrow or next day, so we can talk to him as well, just to make sure that it's the right direction that he feels.
So can I just clarify one thing before you finish up, Steve? So, and the rules and norms, are they signed? That we accept the rules and norms? They're not? As a city council.
Yeah, there's nothing that, yeah, it's like a motion that's made to approve them, but there's, correct me if I'm wrong, Janine, there's nothing that's signed. And, and in this version, um, w- with amended rules and norms, there wouldn't be anything additional to sign about a code of conduct.
So you referenced Councilman Blair? Okay, I just didn't know if that was something that we were proposing, so thank you.
We only make new members sign now. So whoever comes on next. Alright, thanks for all your hard work, you guys, that's um. That's awesome.
It was enlightening while we were going through this.
Well, we have now moved to the rede- redevelopment piece of our uh. Meeting, uh, Sarah, how are you?
Alright, good afternoon. Thank you for. Providing the time for this item today. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of other people that are here that have worked on this item. Um, as with all things Nine Rails, this has been a really close collaboration between Economic Development and ACE. And we have Lori Buckley, our City Arts Administrator here. Um, and then we've also worked with Ogden Contemporary Arts or OCA as we've put this proposal together. Um, and we have Vanessa Castignoli, Executive Director for OCA, as well as Thane Fisher, who's an OCA Board Member here. And if you have any questions specific to the organization, um, they'll be available to help answer those. So um, we're presenting a pilot project um, to use funding from the Adams CRA. Um, for an agreement with OCA um, to support arts programming in the Nine Rails Creative District. And we'll start just by taking a look at some of the existing plans that have already been adopted for this area. Um, the first one is the Project Area Plan for the Adams CRA. So the Project Area Plan actually identifies the creation of a cultural district, which we call Nine Rails. Um, as a key project. And then it also has a development objective to promote and encourage. The retention and expansion of all segments of the arts. So the way that we typically use RDA funding um, is generally to incentivize development projects. To fund public spaces or other public improvements such as infrastructure. Um, but we've seen that the arts and events programming can be another really critical tool to help with the revitalization of an area. Um, and to really activate it and engage the community with the work that's going on there. Um, so in this case, um, having some additional programming that supports the, the creative district. Um, is very much in line with the goals of the Adams CRA Project Area Plan. I don't know where that one went. Um. We'll get that up in just a minute, but um, the next plan that we wanted to take a look at is the Nine Rails Creative District. Um, so we do have a master plan for the Nine Rails Creative District and that district does sit primarily within the Adams CRA. Um, the stated vision of that master plan is to develop an epicenter for arts and culture. And there were four key strategy areas that we identified in the master plan that we wanted to pursue to achieve that vision. Um, this four strategy areas include public spaces and projects, streetscape improvements. Development standards and projects and programs and activities. Um, so we've really made a lot of great prog- progress on those first three areas. We've been able to do some great projects up in Nine Rails. Um, with projects like the Monarch, the Dumkey Arts Plaza, the Corner Plaza, um, and now the new landscaping that we have out on Twenty-Fifth Street. Um, but where we've had, um, where we've had a challenge is on the programming side of things. Um, our city staff um, only have so much capacity and have really tried to position themselves as. The facilitators of events programming and not necessarily the producers of all the events that take place in our community. Um, and so. Um, we feel like there's some additional support needed there to make sure we can continue to delever- deliver a high level. Of arts and events programming in Nine Rails and really make sure that we're activating that area. Um, and supporting some of the capital investments that we're making. Um, so to help address that, um, we've, we've been working with Ogden Contemporary Arts or OCA. Um, and thinking about potential solutions for the area. Um, OCA is a nonprofit arts organization that's already operating in the Nine Rails Creative District. They've opened a, a public gallery space there. Since twenty twenty. Um, and what we're proposing to do with this pilot project is to um, contract with OCA to sustain and expand its arts programming. In the Nine Rails District. And the items that you see on this slide are essentially the scope of work that we're looking at under that programming agreement. And they kind of fall into two buckets. So there's a bucket for general support and then there's a bucket for items that are a little bit more project specific. Um, so under the general support, um, that would include the exhibitions that OCA um, coordinates and hosts in its main gallery. Um, including its participation in the First Friday Art Stroll. Um, OCA's Artist in Residence Program, which is a really great program. They'll bring in an artist, often a nationally recognized or internationally known artist. To come and actually live in Ogden for a period of time, um, work with our community and create a, an ex- exhibition. Or a public art piece. And then the last item under general support is the Artist Factory Workshops, um, which. Give opportunities for, um, to engage primarily youth, but also other community. Give opportunities for, um, to engage primarily youth, but also other community members with art. Um, and then there are a couple of project specific items, um, that we would really want to make sure happen in nine rails under this programming agreement. Um, we want to make sure that OCA can continue and grow its OCA Block Party. Um, that's a free community art festival that was hosted for the first time last year, um, and the second one's coming up in just a couple of weeks here in September. Um, we also want to make sure that OCA can maintain the platform's outdoor sculpture park. Um, so if you guys are familiar with that, it's right on the corner of 25th and Adams. Um, and we want to make sure that that continues to be maintained with, uh, art pieces and landscaping. And then finally, we'd like to have OCA go after additional funding opportunities for new public art in the nine rails district. Um, and in particular, we'd like the focus there to be art for the three new sculpture pads that we have on 25th Street out in the park strips. Oh, sorry, I forgot one item there. Um, so we're looking at this as a pilot project, so we're proposing an eighteen month initial term for this agreement. Um, and looking at a total contract budget of a hundred and eight thousand. Um, so as I mentioned, we're looking at the Adams CRA as our funding source for this effort. Um, and it's been really interesting to see that Adam's CRA has seen such a significant growth in value. Um, outpacing even some of our other project areas. Um, and that's due in part to the nine rails creative district and all the arts and culture activity that we've had up in that area. Um, and you'll just see here, um, the assessed value in that CRA has actually increased a hundred and seventy-five percent from the base year to present. Um, so we have the increment coming in that we need to fund this initiative. Um, and then we also have headroom for our total, kind of the, um, maximum budget that was set, um, for this CRA. Um, and we are working on a, a related budget opening that will come to you shortly, um, that would actually. Allocate those CRA funds for project area programming. Um, so as far as next steps go, we're basically ready to embark on this pilot project with OCA. For arts programming in the nine rails district. And then we also want to use this as an opportunity to think about whether. RDA funds could be used to support future programming needs in new project areas. Um, so the example we've thought about here is Union Station, and if that becomes a redevelopment project area. We know that we're going to have some pretty significant needs to activate that space. If you guys have seen the preferred concept, it's got just. Tons of public space in front of the station itself that would need to be programmed. Um, that might have more of a cultural or historic focus rather than solely being arts focused. Um, but we kind of want to try it out with this pilot project and see if we're able to effectively use the RDA funds to support programming so that we could look at that. As a tool to use on future projects as well. So that's all I've got and happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
I have got a couple of questions, um. So I was curious, oh, you were saying that this is kind of a model for how RDA funds could be used for programming. So we, have we done that anywhere else in any other?
Not specifically, no, um, and I think we would want to make sure we're only doing it where it aligns with the goals that we have for that specific. Project area. So it's not just something we would open up for all project areas, but when we have a project area. Like for the Adams area that's focused specifically on creating a creative district or with Union Station, if we wind up having a project area goal, that's about. Making that a, a cultural center, um, for Ogden. Then I think in those cases, that's where we're interested in using funds for, for programming to support those project area goals.
And, um, I noticed that, um, it's primarily focused on just right in front of the Monarch, but the nine rails, um, district is much larger. So like right now, we're working on trying to program some things at Lester Park. And we don't know who can help sponsor that. I mean, we're having meetings about it, so I guess I'm curious. Um, you know, of course I see the need to write in front of the Monarch too, but I wonder about the rest of the district. So like if this area is getting a concentrated focus. Could there be other funds or how could we, um? Try to expand so that we can do it across a larger area.
Yeah, I think that's definitely something that we could explore. Um, we would probably just want to look at our scope and budget to make sure that that's, you know, within the organization's overall capacity. Um, given the other initiatives that they're already working on. Right, and then, um, also make sure that if we're, if there were a specific request to bring arts programming to Lester Park, we would probably want to. Add some budget for that as well. Or reallocate it from some of the areas that we've looked at right now that are more on that lower 25th Street area.
I have a bunch of questions for you, so. So I'll start with, um. First of all, I'm, I'm hesitant only in that. To me, CRA funds or any increment should be used for. And I'm just going to use words like assets, um, to continue assets. So this is a big leap to, to use in programming. Um, so we might have to have more of a conversation around, I mean, I understand. Why programming brings other people and, and helps that. Um, I'm concerned, I, I'll just give you my concerns first, um, my, so I'm concerned with that. The second one is I'm concerned with if we use it more. In, in lines with going down that road, Lester Park, Union Station, anywhere like that. That it dilutes the possibility of, uh, increment going back to our partners, school district and. The county and so, um, I, I'd be a little bit concerned i- in that, um. In that area. And then, um, the last thing I'm, uh, uh, in, and I, I don't know how this all plays into it because I'm, I'm not the RDA guru, but. Where we're funding a nonprofit. There will be no increment generated from the nonprofit itself. And so, um, you know, trying to figure out how. You know, the synergy works with, with, um, uh, another nonprofit, um, and tho- those are just. Um, concerns, um. More so, I would think that new market tax credits and those kind of things are used more for programming, um, as opposed to, uh, CRA increment, but. Again, I'm not that guru. So I just, um, would love for us to have a little bit more of a conversation, um, about how. This might. Might generate more funds and, and some of the, and, you know, alleviate some of those concerns. Because obviously if it does work, we, why wouldn't we do Ogden Downtown Alliance and then the, the Union Station and everybody else that is a nonprofit that needs, you know. Some helping with programming, so. Um, just, and I just don't want to dilute our. Ability to have that increment, um, for assets that would come out of the ground that would actually have some synergy with. With increment down the road, so.
And I think on that, um. It's not, it's not a complete answer and definitely something we'd be happy to have some more discussion on, but we've actually started to look at. How some of these arts and culture activities are actually driving value in the CRA, so. It seems like it's not always just making the capital investment that increases the property values in a CRA that. Drives the increment and ultimately increases the revenues to the taxing entities. Sometimes it's the activities that are happening in, in a district that are contributing to that increase in property values. So that's kind of the mindset that we've come at this with. Um, but we'd be happy to have some more discussion on that and kind of work that through a little bit more.
Yeah, and those are just, you know, some top of my head. I'm sure I can come up with five more if you want me to. But I, I think that's great. I mean, you know, I think, um. I applaud you for thinking outside the box and I, I really appreciate that, so.
I, I have, uh. We've been, we've all been recently wounded by truth and taxation. Um, the mayor and, uh, Bart and I, uh. As, as recently as last night, we were, uh, members of a board that. Was considering a tax increase for the sewer district and we. Listen to people who. Who think that maybe government, you know, sewer district's a little different than a city government because there's no discretionary spending. Really at a sewer district, you got to process the waste and, you know, it, it takes what it takes. The city, we do have discretionary and, and I think we need to. Take a hard look at. Is this. Worth the discretionary spending that we're, we're, we're wanting it to do. In other words, does it pay us back? Does it, does it create something? And, and, uh. You know, I, I think, I think that's the first thing we have to answer when we look at stuff like this. And so you, you used the word assets. I, I, I get assets, but, but I think return is, is kind of what I'm looking at. So. The, anyway, I, I just, I, I do think cultural things are really important for a community. They're not urgent, they're not, um. Required, but they're, they're sure nice. And so I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to, I just want to keep it in its category. I, I think that's where I'm. I'm just wanting to throw that out, that we, we've got to, we've got to make sure that these things. Uh, work or we shouldn't spend the money, so.
And we can provide, um, it's, it's probably information you all have seen before, but there's some good data out there on the economic impact of the arts generally. Um, I don't know that we have a great way to quantify this specific project, but generally speaking. We've looked at, especially with nine rails, we've looked at arts and culture as an economic development tool. Um, not just as kind of an add-on that's like a nice amenity for the community to have, but this is something that actually wants people to. Makes people want to choose to live here, to work here, to invest here with their development projects. And we feel like we're seeing some of that with how rapidly the value. In the Adams CRA has grown relative to some of our other project areas. Um, so that's, that's a few ways that we've looked at the return on this is kind of high level economic impact of arts and culture. And then at the local level, looking at what's happened in the Adams CRA. And always with our TIF, um, we really try to emphasize to everybody that we work with that. It's not, it's not taking away from the tax base that already exists. It's what can we do to grow that tax base and deferring the increase in tax revenues that we'll all get, but it's, it's. We look at it as funding that wouldn't exist unless we were making these investments that drive value in our project areas.
So would this portion be coming out of the administrative side of the, I mean, so. I mean, is it in, in lieu of what you might hire. On your staff. In, instead, just basically from the administrative side, moving it now to a, a, an external.
Um, we haven't looked at taking it from the. Percent that's moved to administration from that project area. We've looked at the, kind of the general, um, funds that exist in the operating expenses for that. Project area and what we've talked about with Mara and Lisa is, you know, we have a line item for operating expenses for that project area. And we've talked about requesting another budget line for project area programming when that's in line with the project area plan goals. Um, so it's not something that we are currently looking at, moving it from administration. We're more looking at taking it from the, the remainder. That's not set aside for housing or admin.
And I have many questions to follow up on that too. I'm curious, um, I mean, I, I love pilot projects. I do a lot of them all the time for various reasons, but, um. What happens when that funding is gone, that funding source is gone? So I guess I'm thinking more about the sustainability over time. Um, of this type of funding, not specifically to this one in particular, but what happens then?
So I think there's a couple of options, um. One is that there, I mean, to, to be very frank, like I think that there could be a need for, um. Support for arts programming in the nine rails over a longer period, eighteen months isn't very long. So I think, you know, it's like, if, we want to evaluate it over the course of this eighteen months and feel like, is it achieving the outcomes that we want to see? If it is, it may be something that we do want to think about extending for a longer duration. Um, the other.
Same funding source.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, we could look at other funding sources as well. I think. One of the precedents that we've looked at for this agreement is the city's agreement with the downtown alliance. Um, thinking about how we can contract with nonprofits to provide additional services. Um, and that's, I believe funded by the general fund rather than by CRA funds. So it's not, doesn't necessarily have to be CRA funds. Um, but we felt like because. That project area is in such close alignment with the creative district that that's the best funding source to use for this initial period. And then we could look at the options after that.
Sure, because that gets me into another question that I had. And again, you all know my bias. I love OC and I love the whole nine rails district, but, um. So I'm trying to put my, um, alternate, uh, hat on. Um, so I guess I'm thinking we made a policy around how we fund not-for-profits in the city. So I'm wondering how this aligns with that. Did we? Do an RFP? Is there a process to know that this is the right organization to fulfill this and how would other people apply?
So this one we are looking at as a sole source. Um, and it's primarily because OCA is currently kind of the predominant organization that's located in nine rails. It's already. Doing this existing programming in nine rails and in particular.
I mean, what about Echo's Art Center? Just as an argument. They're in the nine rails district and they've been doing program really a long time.
Yeah.
So somebody can say to me, why didn't we get the opportunity to do this?
I think some of it too, and I, I know that Echo Center does some of this as well, but some of it is. The community engagement aspect as well of the work that OCA does with the Artist Factory Workshops. Having programming that's primarily free and accessible to the public. Um, and the ability to program out in the public realm. Um, so those are some of the things that we've looked at as we've developed this proposal, um, and would look at doing it as a sole source for those reasons.
I just know I'm going to get some pushback there because there's a couple of other organizations that also already provide that service.
How much I could visit again?
Um, so we looked at kind of an annual budget and so the annual amount would be seventy-two thousand. And then when we take that out to an eighteen month term, the total amount would be a hundred and eight thousand.
Would it be hard to do an RFP?
It would not be hard to do an RFP, but I don't know if that would best serve the interests of the project. I mean, part of what we're talking about doing is. Sustaining existing program, programming. Um, and in particular, I think we've seen a lot of benefit from this specific programming that OCA does in the nine rails district. Um. If we needed to, it's something that we could look at doing, but, um. We would recommend it, doing it as a sole source, I think, based on the, the discussions we've had leading up to this.
Any other questions? Dave have any questions? Janine, are there next steps for us?
Um, yes, I don't know if you want to have additional discussion about this, um. We can put it on an agenda or we can, we just, just got the art, the budget amendment, so we could. Do them together and so that would give you another opportunity, another work session to talk about this. When we consider the budget amendment.
I personally have some questions that I would like to get answered or maybe have a conversation, so I don't know if it needs to have another work session, you know, but. Yeah.
I'd certainly like to let this marinate for a little bit. And then have another discussion before it hits an agenda.
Thank you.
Uh, council business or board or council or board business, um, anything? I think Chief Subey wanted to come up and. And the mayor. If you don't mind, I think we'll probably also wander in and get some food, so. No offense, we get up.
Yeah, no. I'm sure the food's really good, but you're going to want, you're going to want to hear it, so. No, thanks. We've been. Making a concerted effort to make sure that we have the, the police and the fire chiefs available and interacting with the council on regular intervals, so it's. Acting Chief Subey's opportunity and, and turn today, so we were hoping that if there were more time that we would have a chance to do this, so thanks. Um, I don't know about you guys, but I'm getting a lot of feedback and input around back to school for kids. Uh, Chief Subey can talk about. Um, uh, Chief Subie can talk about some of the efforts that we've been doing, but there's um some of the things that come to mind with Taylor Avenue. So we've been in touch with Weber State, we're prepared for the enforcement around that. Um, but also uh DaVinci Academy and some new development there and new plans. And we've been really heavily involved in, on the staff side to make sure on the daily that we are helping to facilitate good, safe uh logistics for pickup and drop-off at DaVinci uh to make sure that kids stay safe and that parents know kind of what the new routine is and the new normals. And we've had really good interactions from uh public services uh with our engineers, our traffic engineer, our uh PIO with Mike McBride helping with communications. Cindy's been involved with helping with collaboration and so on. So um, I wanted to give Chief Subie a chance to talk about some of that um and some other things as well.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it, Council, for letting me take a few minutes of your time. Uh, I know it's valuable and, and I will definitely not be offended if you get up and grab food um at all. But um, what the, the mayor spoke about is that uh we are um prioritizing um the community's safety and particularly uh in the traffic environment. Right now is a critical time as schools moving back in, Weber State's going back into session. Um, and so we've put out some public information to make sure that the community, kind of some PSA information to be looking out for crosswalks that are beginning, gonna be used again. They're gonna be more frequently occupied in the mornings and in the afternoons. Um, so we've really pushed some of those campaigns and we'll continue to do that as we move through the first leg of the school year. Um, and then the mayor touched on a couple of the kind of hot-button concern areas that we have right now. First, I'll, I'll mention the DaVinci Academy. We've, we've been in a lot of the meetings um to kind of discuss the concerns um on all sides that are involved in what's going on there, the, the contractor, the uh um, uh, the school itself. Um, and then our primary goal in the police department was to make sure that we keep traffic flowing, that the kids, as they're moving to and from school, are safe and that we give um, you know, the, a lot of time to make sure that that's done correctly. Uh, I think we, we had a few concerns that very first day, but uh a lot of heads got together quickly and created a plan that I think we've, we've found some success. And I think there's gonna be some continued progress and advancing that as the school year goes on and as different phases of that construction happens um that will modify how traffic may flow. Um, but we've had officers out there ensuring that traffic's flowing, that the BRT keeps running um and a lot of those things. So we'll, we'll continue working through that and working with them. Uh, the other one mentioned is, is the Taylor Avenue area up there. And there are a lot of concerns from the community members up there about traffic safety. Um, and uh, so we've already started partnering with Weber State. Weber State understands that they have a role in this with a lot of their students are often uh the individuals that might be involved in some of the dangerous um vehicle travel up in that area. And so they've been great, Chief Calley's been phenomenal in, in partnering with us and, and moving forward and how we make that uh, that community safer. I know the city has already made great strides in getting signage and, and those types of things up there to help as a deterrent. Um, we're also um putting our officers up there, especially at those critical times. The only thing we don't know is what are those critical times yet? So we have what we call our jammers, they're, they're uh, it's a data collecting program. So it goes up there, you place it in the street, it's gonna track data over time. We've had it up there for a period of time now. We wanted to have that data capturing um mechanism up before Weber State School was officially in session, so we could see what the traffic patterns were. And then we want after, so once school kicks back in here, I think it's on the twenty-sixth, I think is when they're officially back in. Um, we'll look at the data after, but what that's going to give us is an exact snapshot of when we should put officers up there addressing the concerns. It's gonna tell us what those concerns are, whether it's speed um or, or any other type of uh vehicle activity that we might have concerns with. So i- it, it won't just be a, a shotgun approach and hope that we hit the right times. It's gonna be very data-driven on how we get our resources up there and address it. And so we've got a lot of things in place to work towards that. Um, because we understand the, the plight of the community up there and, and they want, they want it to feel safe. They want their kids, their grandkids to feel safe, to be able to um, you know, go out and, and, and cross roads and not have concerns about uh being uh put in danger. So we've got a lot of those things uh working in place. And we do the same thing when it comes to any citizen complaint. When we get complaints across the city when it relates to traffic or they're concerned in a neighborhood that are speeding, there's, we utilize these jammers regularly to place out there so that we not only could decide when we need to put people out there, but also sit down and have real conversations with community members to explain like, look, we understand this is your perception, but this is what data shows. Not that we don't wanna be up there and help them, but we want them to understand. And generally, those conversations go really well when they actually see the data and they see what's happening in their neighborhood. Um, it usually has a, a positive effect on them and it reduces the number of complaints that maybe may not need to come in. Uh, on the other side of that, it also gives us data to say, nope, we've gotta step up and do something. We've gotta be up there more, we've gotta prioritize this, whether that's our traffic unit or a combination thereof of our, our area cars that are working up there. So um, that's kind of what I wanted to touch specifically on as it relates to um, kind of what we're doing right now. We're amping up, you know, just focusing on making our streets safe. Um, but we, we felt, the mayor and I felt that this was a great opportunity because there has been some media requests and, and uh some, some community requests on information about how we evaluate our employees and how we evaluate them when it comes to dealing with traffic and specifically um when we issue citations.
Before you move on to that, so you mentioned something and I just, it, it made me, it. I, I know that you think I'm a pretty docile person, but um, uh, the other day, there was a, a, a kid from one of the high schools um just tearing up our street. And I might've said some bad words to them, um, with maybe of some finger gestures, but what do, what, what? I know, I know, I admit it, so, you know. Um, what do you do with the high schools? What do you, are, are you working with the high schools, Ogden High, Ben Lomond, to talk, you know, have them talk to the, the students and, and help, and ha- having them understand?
Yeah, I think it's important, we already have a resource up there with our school resource officers and making sure that they're a part of any complaints that we're having up there. We expect them to be out and about when school is coming in and out, and so they should be visible and present. And so if we are seeing it, oftentimes we get feedback from the SROs on they need additional resources. Um, what we don't know is what we don't know. So, so if we're not provided the information to know that driving patterns and behaviors are uh degrading in an area, it's hard for us to address them or put resources to it. But the minute we know, we're going to, we're going to jump on it. And the first step we're gonna take is the SRO, right? They're on scene, they're at the school, they know what's going on. Um, and they're gonna be able to assess it and then let us know specifically, do we need to, do we need to put some area cars up there um to help with, with that? Because they can't be everywhere, the SRO obviously can't be.
Yeah, I was just more thinking about just, you know, pre, you know, being not reactive, but, you know.
Yes.
And, and trying to really, you know, talk to the students that you, you all live in neighborhoods and I just wondered.
Yeah, we definitely, and I think it, moving into the school year, they start about a week early with the schools to start getting that stuff squared away, the training that they need. And um, you know, and they'll, they'll start looking at making sure that they, if anything's changed in the flow of traffic at a school, they're gonna know and understand where pickup and drop-off is and those types of things. And so um, we really rely heavily on them. And then Sergeant Flint, who's over the SRO program, to provide feedback to us to make sure that we, we get the resources that are needed. So we would definitely address it and we're definitely mindful of educating.
Great.
Um, versus always enforcement, so.
Thanks.
That's helpful input, actually.
I was just gonna say thank you, um, yeah, the sign, the flashing signs have gone in on Taylor both sides. It's great, I've noticed, um, or I appreciate you working with Weber State also to kind of let them know they do have a part in this. So um, I'm excited to see what information we get back once school starts. Um, I think that'll go a long way and if not, maybe we'll just have Marcia stand on the street. But no, really, thank you, it's, 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 it's noticed and, and I think this'll really do a lot to, to curb or solve the issues that happen on Taylor, so thanks.
I think Chief Subie will be relieved when school starts and Weber State's there and it all comes together because every director's meeting, like, is Weber State still on the ready?
No.
It's important to me and to us that we, that we say what we're gonna do, then we do what we say. And so we've been maybe sometimes a little uptight about it, but I really appreciate um Chief's follow-through on that. Appreciate the input that you give.
Councilmember Graff has a, a quick comment, too, so I didn't wanna.
Oh, thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, Chief Subie. Hey, one more thing, as school's beginning, I spent time light last spring with some crossing guards and they've got a tough job, too, and it's a dangerous one. Can you speak to um any efforts that are taking place currently to ensure their safety as they're back at their posts with the new school year?
Yeah, definitely, I expect that. We just had uh all of them come together for a big meeting, so that happens pre-school year. It's kind of a dual purpose. It's uh um to time, talk about those that were here from the year prior um and the successes that they had, recognize some of those um individuals who've done great things that are in that group as well as those that have, have long tenures in, in serving in that capacity. Um, it's a hard job, um, it's, it's a, it's a unique job. And so that part of it, but the other part of it is, is to, to re-up training, re-emphasize um their safety, the, the kids' safety, the community's safety up there. And so then uh with that, we, we're always looking to make sure we have the right safety equipment, the right supplies that they need to be safe, that they have the proper signage, that their signage is well-maintained. It's, it's clear, it's, you know, we don't want old, uh, old material up there that, that uh may not be clear for driving uh people in vehicles to see. So we always make sure they have the right equipment. We've done that in the, for the winter months, all the way down to making sure they have the ability to put spikes on their shoes so that they're not slipping on the ice. We're trying to think of a lot of the different things to keep them safe, because when they're safe, they're keeping the kids safe. Um, so that's a big part of, of what we're doing. And then when, anytime we onboard uh a uh, um, a crossing guard, they're gonna go through some very specific training on how to do their job to keep the kids safe as well as keep uh themselves safe.
Thank you for that. How, how about backup? If any particular crossing guard has uh reports, you know, bad behavior on driver's parts, do they get any backup? Is there a plan to provide that at certain locations so that uh drivers that are ignoring the crossing guard um are um stopped and educated?
Yeah, great question. So um, sometimes it can be difficult if it's a momentary thing that's called in and then getting units up there to handle it and respond immediately. Um, but obviously, if they call and make a notification that something's happened, we're gonna get officers up there to respond and attempt to stop the vehicle and, and then take whatever appropriate action is necessary based on the circumstances. If it's a habitual problem um that the crossing guard is reporting to us, they have a direct line, their supervisor. Um, Jessica is fantastic, she has a great relationship with Lieutenant Stiver um and Sergeant Connors, who are over our traffic bureau. So they're communicating regularly um on those issues. So when we have those types of concerns, we amp it up and they'll typically put uh officers in those school zones and those school areas to amp up um or even deter, right? To, to reduce the amount of problems that are being observed. And so we, we respond quickly to their concerns and complaints because we understand the risk here and that's, that's kids, that's kids' safety. So um, we try to, we try to move as quickly as possible. The hope is that we can hit those right away um on the immediate complaints. But um uh, when it comes to the long-term, we're, yeah, we have that, a great, a great group of people that are always communicating uh to make sure that we are doing the right things.
Yeah, thank you, I think it's more the habitual ignorance on the part of drivers with regard to what they're asked to do and required to do around uh crossing guards. That's uh the bigger component of education that needs to take place, and I thank you very much.
Absolutely, the other side is we always try to do social media posts that, that educate the community, too, on what to expect from crossing guards. So we, we would anticipate that coming out fairly soon from our department as well. So that um, you know, the, the community understands that, that they're a traffic control device, that you're required to adhere to what they're directing of traffic, just as if an officer was standing out in that crosswalk. They have the same authority at that moment to control traffic. So we'll, we're, we're gonna be putting, we'll have continued PSAs about traffic safety and school safety and um, and especially specifically with the crossing guards. So thank you, appreciate, appreciate the question.
I was gonna add that, I was gonna add that uh just this morning, leaving my house, headed to the gym before coming to work, I went through quite a presence of OPD in a school zone. Um, I know that they keep a really regular presence at, at the schools and in the crosswalks, especially the, the ones that are frequent challenges. Um, and that presence is really important. But as we um, I, I wanna add too that on the, on the DaVinci challenge, I just wanna say that we've had tremendous amount of collaboration from the, all the departments within the city as well as the um, the developer that's involved in the project that's next door. Um, they're bending over backwards to make sure to facilitate uh solutions, uh especially as dynamics change throughout the development. Um, if word gets back to you that, that we're not doing that, I can assure you that everybody that's at the table is doing everything possible to ensure safety. Um, but as we go into the school year and with Weber State firing up with uh classes, the community's gonna start to see a lot more OPD presence, particularly in these school zones again. We'll be pushing the PSA like Chief said, but also um, there tends to be questions about anytime there's a big show of force from OPD and we wanna make sure that the community knows and that you guys know that um, that the, that any uh perception that we're incentivizing our officers uh to issue citations has been handled. And I did ask Chief to be prepared to share more about that. Um, we've shared some before, but it's a commitment that I made um in the campaign. It's a commitment that I made in the council chambers to, that we would have something in place by July first. We've done that. Uh, Chief can report a little bit on some of the progress that we've had there. And hopefully you can share that if anybody reaches out to you and to anybody that's watching this, that we're being uh really open and transparent about uh the way we're approaching that.
Yeah, thank you. So what I, what I was gonna lead into is that is kind of explaining what we've done as an agency to come to where we are in our current evaluation system. Um, to make it, in my opinion, unequivocally clear that, that we are not prioritizing one type of enforcement over uh another. We are prioritizing um quality work by officers that are providing the service that the community deserves, that they are using discretion appropriately to make the decisions on how they take action in a myriad of different circumstances, to include traffic-related enforcement. Um, there has been a perception that uh we were requiring a certain number of citations. Um, to combat that, we've, we've reevaluated our system for evaluating our officers to make sure that we're still getting highly productive, hard-working officers that the community deserves. Um, and then eliminate that perception that, that we are mandating some sort of a ticket requirement. Um, so we've always had two quantitative categories in our evaluation for our officers. Um, we have eight total categories within our evaluation. So those, there's only two of those categories that are quantitative. Um, the other two are more qual, or the other, the others are qualitative. So there are more teamwork, um investigative skills, those types of things. Um, but there are two quantitative, one being dispatch-related. So when you are dispatched to a call, there's expectations on every officer when they go to a call. Um, and that's to handle it appropriate, that's uh oftentimes it requires a police report and those things. And so it's going, that quantitative is gonna ensure that the officers are meeting the standards that we expect and that the community should expect. Um, the next side is what we call self-initiated public contact, and that would encompass um traffic, right? So going out and when officers are doing uh track enforcement, but that encompasses so much more than just traffic. So uh, anything an officer is doing outside of what dispatch does is what we consider un-uncommitted patrol time. So what are officers doing when dispatch isn't telling them what to do? And that becomes important to the community and to the city because that's when we're doing proactive ways to stop theft, to stop traffic concerns, to, to reduce graffiti, to, right? Those are the times that we want officers out doing active engagement to, to prevent these things that are happening. And so in our evaluation system, under the committee, under the self-initiated side, um, the old system, um, it was weighted, so it was depending on the type of action you took, uh, it was weighted. So if you, if you did an FI, it was worth three points, which is a filled interview. If you did a police report, it was worth four points or whatever it may have been. Um, if it was a citation, then it was broken down between moving, non-moving um uh and, and written warning. And so those were weighted differently. Um, the reality of it is, is we just want officers out working. And so we convened a committee from line-level officers all the way up to a captain who, who worked together to come up with a, a system that, that was built by them that still met the expectation that we have of officers outworking and providing what the community deserves. And that's, that's proactive law enforcement, proactive work in their community, in their neighborhoods. So with that, we developed a system that basically just says everything's equal. As long as you are meeting this standard, it's all equal. If I, if I go out and work the Taylor uh Avenue area and I'm asked to go up and enforce um potential traffic, there will be no difference, and there is no difference between an officer who There will be no difference, and there is no difference between an officer who, who writes a citation or an officer who decides that in that case. A filled interview was appropriate, that they just document the stop, that they had a conversation with the driver and educated them on it. There's no difference, they are equal, that means they're out doing their job and they're working. This is in its infancy, we've had probably four to five officers that have come up on evaluation under this new system. And it, it appears to be working as we've, as the committee expected. The numbers are looking good, most officers are meeting the highest standard in that category. So. The other side, side of this that I wanna bring up too is that we also made sure that we involved. Some of the organizations that represent the body of our officers, the, the Weber Fraternal Order of Police, the Ogden Police Benefits Association. We asked them to review what this committee put together and how we were doing to see if they bought into what we. What, what has been created, that there is no guise of anything here other than police work. Going out and doing police work, and we have their full support. The, the Weber FOP actually wrote us a letter in support of our new evaluation system. Which I think says a lot, because they are, they are representing the people who are out on the street doing the work, so. I feel like this committee did a very thoughtful job in creating what they've created. The big thing for me next is to now watch what happens with our crime stats. And we wanna make sure that the, the, the community is safe. I wanna wa, I wanna make sure that our traffic accidents aren't up, I wanna make sure that our crime doesn't go up, I wanna make sure that what we've. Now narrowed this down to in, in individual police actions. Is sufficient to maintain what we already have. We're on some historic reductions in crime in, since 2016, we're over 50%. Reduction in crime, and so the worst thing would be to go backwards. But again, it just comes down to officers doing the right things. Giving them discretion to make the right decision in those circumstances, because I can't sit in my office and decide whether an officer made the right decision. On issuing a ticket, writing an FI, or whatever it may be. They, they need, we need to give them and empower them to do that, and I believe this new evaluation system does that. It gives them what they need, the tools they need to, to help meet what we have and we believe help continue to. Have our crime rate continue to go down. Was there anything else I missed on that, Mayor, that you can think of that?
I don't think so, I think, but I saw Rich.
Yeah, yeah, Chief, thank you so much for, for your explanation. I, I. I kind of struggled to understand exactly what writing tickets is to a police officer. Is it like cleaning the toilets or? I, I just don't know why that's an issue. I, I guess I haven't understood, understood that, is that?
Yeah, the majority of officers don't enjoy traffic enforcement. It's a, it's a built-in confrontational conversation. It's generally adversarial. Officers are very type A, but that does not necessarily mean that they wanna be out being the bad guy, right? So the minute you, you write a ticket, there is, there is a negative connotation to that, right, that, that, and so that, that's not lost on me and that's not lost on the officers. So it's not something that they are gravitating to. They would much rather stop a car and educate. Provide a written warning, do something like that in a lot of cases, however. I think when you give them that, that latitude, they also will build the, the confidence in reality that there's times. That, you know, you're going 40 through a kid's school zone that's a 20. Probably is, is, is much more concerning, cause the risk of that is dire, right?
I'm sure you're aware, I mean, when this came to light, the year, or whatever it was. I, I took my own little initiative to go and ask people if they felt like they'd been targeted by too many tickets and whatnot, and. In, in my own non, non-educated survey, not non-scientific survey, everybody that I spoke with said, well, no, not at all, I would, matter of fact, I wish they'd do more because. We got speeding going on like crazy around here and we've got. Noise like crazy, and we got all kinds of things that they, they, that, that kind of thing would really help. So I think this, I think our citizenry would really appreciate. You know, that kind of thing ramping up rather than. Being diminished at all, and, and I, and I appreciate your, your new system. I, I think in any job. An employer should be able to expect. The employees to do the job. And not just do everything but clean the toilets, do you know what I mean? I mean, everybody's, everybody's job has an element of that, I think, you know, I don't. Mine does, I, at least, so. I, I just wanna make sure that, that there is still some emphasis, because I think there's a, a serious need.
Yeah, I, I will say that. That. Hundred percent believe that, that we should expect our officers to be out there working and our, our, our main goal behind this was just to, to. Reduce the stigma or the perception that, that we had some form of requirement that on every certain type of stop, we had to issue a citation. The goal here is, and I think what the committee came up with and the, the police department's administration reviewed. Meets what we expect officers to be doing in place of what our old system was. I, we believe that what we're asking the officers to do, whether that be they, you know, making, making a hazardous moving violation equal to a non-hazardous, equal to a. Of, of a written warning, sends the same message and does the same thing, right? It's addressing the immediate behavior at that moment, and we want officers to take that initiative to do that, again, whether. You know, you have an individual who's driving around three in the morning and their headlights are out and you pull them over. Maybe the more important thing in that is an issuing the ticket for driving with your headlights off, but maybe it's more important to. Write the filled interview that documents the person, the place and the time, so that when we get. A vehicle burglary that happened two blocks from there, we can say, wow, five minutes after that occurred. We had this suspicious dream vehicle driving with its lights out, right? So they're doing proactive work that's generating information to help us. Then investigate potentially future crimes as well, so. It's, so that's why I say like, we want a very balanced approach from our officers, we want them to use their common sense, we want them to use. Their right intuition when they're making the decisions to take action, and sometimes that means they need to get a ticket, and sometimes that means. I need to write a report because something's off, right? A ticket ain't gonna do this justice, I need to write. There's a couple of cans of spray paint in the backseat, but I don't have anything to say, I can do more with that, but this, this just warrants a police report. We need to have this documented so that when we get a call tomorrow of the park a block away that has graffiti on it and we documented they had a can of red and a can of black. That's what I want officers to be doing, not going, should I write a ticket or should I? What should this be? I want them to think like, what should I do that is in benefit of, of reducing crime and continuing? I think we've. I think we've done that, and we're gonna continue and, and, and my. My responsibility is to then make sure now that we've made these changes that we don't go, okay, that's it, we made the changes, we're gonna move on. That now we're gonna watch, right? We're gonna track this, we have a fantastic crime analysis center that we're gonna utilize to track this data. To make sure that what we're doing that's reducing crime continues that same direction, and so. I think we've gotten there and I, I agree with you, like, we, we should hold our employees accountable, they should be out working and, and we should expect that of them, the community expects that of them. So not just me, but the, the community, you know, those, those neighbors expect that, so.
I think we could. Carry this on all night. Thanks for coming, we, we appreciate that. At sometimes having these conversations in the open and, and, and public are really difficult to, to make changes and, and people. Get a little, you know, worried about that, but I appreciate you doing so and being able to do that in front of us, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you guys, I thank you. Thanks, you guys. See you on the other side.
We have a few minutes, we'll see you. We'll see you there too.